Can't see my watch because I got hit.
I got another.
I'll get the call on my.
I got another minute.
Six o'clock.
Is your computer ready?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call our regular meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It is six o'clock. And if you'll stand, we'll say the pledge. Holy just this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
The records show that all board members are present in person except for Mr. Ashworth, who's joining us by phone this evening. And we can begin with our recognition.
Yeah, I wanted to publicly thank Amazon. Michael Perry is the community ambassador for Amazon Huntington. And he helped, he helped facilitate a grant coming to Wayne County schools from the Amazon's Community Impact Grant. That grant is in the amount of $5,000 and it's for our robotics program. So it will be used to purchase equipment for the students to utilize in the robotics competitions, which begin this weekend.
Okay.
Great. So we appreciate Michael and we appreciate Amazon for the, for the grant for supporting the program.
We have any presentations this evening?
No presentations.
Move on to our good news section.
Tomorrow during Veterans Day, the state volleyball tournament begins in Charleston. And Spring Valley High School girls have, the volleyball team has qualified for that tournament and they begin play tomorrow afternoon. I think they're scheduled in the afternoon. Probably about, they're, they're scheduled to go right after the 1:30 game concludes, so.
Great.
And then football playoffs begin here at some point. I know, I haven't.
Weekend.
Friday. I know Spring Valley's in. I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen any of the rankings or anything.
They play Saturday, they play Alphons. At home, yes. Tulsa's in.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think it's Wayne.
Uh-uh.
No, they just missed it, didn't they?
We had CK Middle won the county football championship. Buffalo Middle won the volleyball. And Jeanette Rutherford was named the
Yes.
Cross country coach of the year for the state.
That was great.
So those are three athletic things.
Right.
Yeah, and we had all, we had all three cross-country teams. Or all three schools represented in cross-country at the state meet. Carly Brown for Tulsa was the first runner for Tulsa to compete in the state meet. And then Spring Valley had both the girls and boys teams qualify. And then Wayne had
I think it was a boys team and then.
A boys team and then they had.
Girl qualifier.
Yeah, yeah. So they're doing very well.
Excellent.
There was another thing on that little, the girl that you just mentioned, Holly. Trying to find it. She did something with the military. She was accepted last year.
Yeah, I know she's a big participant in the JROTC program.
She also completed active duty basic training over the summer.
Wow. My goodness.
Took me a minute, but I knew I had it somewhere.
So she was ready for that cross-country race?
Yes, she was ready to run.
Who did you say won the volleyball tournament? Buffalo Middle?
Buffalo Middle.
Informational items, a special meeting on Tuesday, November the 18th, beginning at four at Wayne High School.
Is that our LSIC meeting or?
Yes. Regular meeting on Thursday, November 20th at 6:00 PM here in the board conference room. And then no school, November 24th through the 28th, that's over the break.
And that meeting on the 18th, that is the LSIC meeting and Wayne Middle and Wayne High. It's my understanding they're going to combine their presentations. So we'll, yeah, we'll do it. We'll do it in that one location.
Okay. You know, we had that last meeting at the house. When I first got out of the car, saw that, oh, we got them packed in for this meeting. Didn't realize they had what the volleyball going on.
Any construction project updates?
Yeah, just real quick, Cerito Canova Elementary School, the contractor neighbor goal has been staging to begin that project. So we've got some spaces blocked off and they're beginning to bring in their equipment. And they're on target for that November 24th, I believe, was when they had planned on starting that project. So we're on target there. And then the board had purchased concession stands, restrooms for Fort Gay and Crumb. The concrete has been poured at Fort Gay. They still have a little more concrete to pour. So they're going to have to wait till later in the week till it warms back up and then they'll, they'll pour crumbs. Hopefully next week we'll be able to get that done. That's all I have.
No delegations this evening. So we can move on to superintendent report.
Yeah, and in your separate attachment items, I wanted to share with you on, we went to the school board authority meeting last Tuesday. And presented for the safe schools entries and I just wanted to share with you the documents that we shared at that meeting with the school board authority, the one, the school building authority, the one that we shared was page two. In your separate attachments. And you can see that what we were asking for, the average cost per school was worked out to about $145,000. So it's a very economical project in today's day and age. And you see that the school's listed at the bottom. And then if you go to page three, this is just a sample and again, I had this, didn't need it during the presentation, but this is just a sample of what we're going to be doing. So this, this diagram you see is CK Middle. And if you're familiar with the layout of CK Middle, which I know you all are, you know, you come in those main doors and then you're right there outside the library. So what they, the reason these, these projects are lower cost is because what we're doing is repurposing space. So literally what they would do is just knock a hole in the outer office there. Do a, do a doorway and use some of that door space that's there at the front entry to, to create that man trap. So it just gives you an idea of, of what that would look like. So we're not adding any additional space, which means we don't have to get into HVAC and all that. All we're doing is taking existing space and, and doing some renovation there to, to create those safe entries. So we'll find out in December whether we get any funding for those projects.
Can you get any sense of it, whether they seem receptive or not?
Yeah, I think so.
I think they did. I don't think, I think we had one of the smaller asks, so I'm hoping that maybe if there's some leftovers, we might be slide right in there, so.
Yeah.
Hope so.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, they've had $170 million in requests and they have approximately $43 million to give out. And so I don't know that, you know, it would be probably similar to our MIP project where we got partial funding for, you know, one of the projects and might, might be something similar to that, but we'll see, hopefully so. Okay, next up laid in front of you, the long piece of paper that you have is the certified list. This is how they calculate those positions over formula when we see the preliminary comps and the final comps. So you have the certified list and it is organized by, in alphabetical order by location. So location 001 is the central office and then it goes from there. So this is every employee in the county. That's listed on this form. Has salaries, funding sources, all those type of things. Now, you might see some people whose name appear on here multiple times. And if that's the case, it means that they, their salary is being split, split coded. So for example, I think Jason Cox is one that's on here that's split up. Part of his salary comes from the special ed grant and then the rest comes from the county, that type of thing. Yeah, Mary Lou Perry, some of her salary comes from, comes from different federal funds. Same thing with Nikki Steffi towards the bottom of the page, so that's the explanation for that. So there's your certified list. Also laid in front of you, we've talked several times about an exit survey. When parents withdraw. So I have a draft of the exit interview that would be conducted. And as you can see on the, this is a front and back, as you can see on the bottom of the front page. We would, number one, under the opening, we would emphasize that the conversation is optional and doesn't affect, you know, the child's records or anything like that. And that we're looking for feedback to improve the schools. And then it gives a list of possible reasons, withdrawal reasons to check off. That's anything from transportation challenges to homeschooling to academic program fits, special education services, peer issues, bullying, safety, discipline practices, fairness. And you go onto page two, there's some other reasons listed there and then there's obviously a column for other. Then there's a rating scale for their experience with their overall school, school experience, their quality, the quality of instruction, support and responsiveness, safety and belonging. And special education services if applicable. There's some open ended prompts for the interviewer. And so I wanted to share this with you. This is your first look at it, so if you have any ideas, any suggestions that you would like to see incorporated, just let me know at, at any point and we can certainly do that, but we'll look to, we'll look to get interviews started here before second semester.
That's what I was going to ask. Are they going to, I mean, you're going to ask the people to come in here and who are they going to talk with?
Well, I think we'll reach out by phone.
I thought, oh, good.
Because, you know.
This is kind of long.
Yeah. Yeah.
They may not want to.
Yeah.
Spend that much time.
Yeah, I think it needs to be an interview. And, but most of the time they withdraw. Yeah, yeah, most of the time they withdraw at the school and not here. So to do an in-person, we would have to bring them here and I don't think that that's going to happen, so we'll, we'll try to do it by phone.
Yeah.
I can see why we want to do it by phone, but take a while to go through. It's good that we've laid, laid out a lot of possible withdrawal reasons, but I'm just thinking, man, my goodness.
Well, they don't, they don't, yeah, our person, our person won't go through all those reasons. They're just simply there for them to check off if, if it's mentioned.
So these will be mailed to people?
No, no, no. Phone interview. That's the guide for the, for the person doing the phone interview.
If they're going to list all these reasons and then they're going to select one.
Well, I think technically what they'll do is just ask why, why you were.
Okay, got you, yeah.
Then whatever they say, you check a box that fit for it. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, they may, there may be two or three reasons too.
And they could be, you know, and they could mark them all.
I did want to, I did want to mention tonight, and this wasn't on the list, but we did have a, we're having to replace a glass that got shattered out of the Eastland over the weekend. Somebody tried to get in the cafeteria.
Oh.
And we actually have the person on video and so that's been given to law enforcement, but I don't know, I mean, it looked like they, I don't know, it just, it was odd. I don't think it was a break in attempt. The person just looked like that they were in distress and looked like they expected somebody to be there. You know, beating on the window like somebody was going to come open the door.
Find someone.
Yeah, but the place was dark and so I don't, I don't know, but we've, we have it on video and
Good.
It's pretty clear, so.
Try to follow up and take care of that.
Yeah, so I just want to mention that just in case you hear or see anything about that. And then our final item, well, in your separate attachment items, I wanted to mention as well, the monthly financial report is in there on page one that Jeb provides. And then the final item is continued discussion of budgeting, plan, planning and priorities. So at the last meeting, we talked about one of the things that, that needed to be looked at was the central office cost. So I ran some reports. And I'm going to share these with you. I'm going to give you a handout too. This is just the, all this is, is district enrollments. So you see the size of the districts.
Okay.
This is based on fiscal year 25. Not this year because we don't have, I don't have access to the numbers for the other counties yet. Okay, so you have a district enrollment page. Jeb, you want to grab one of these? I got an extra copy for you. You're welcome. So the first page, the one that says central office salary comparison, total salaries by county. What you're going to see here is you're going to see the total salaries for central office personnel. Now, these were, these were, the total salaries were calculated by taking the certified list report and the position codes for typical central office positions. Superintendent's, assistant superintendents, treasurers, child nutrition directors, attendance directors, social workers, all those type of positions. And so if you look at the list, you'll see we are at 16th in the state. At total salaries were listed at $3,093. Again, that's 16th and you're going to see that your larger counties are up near the top. And the, we are, and I gave you the district enrollment ranking, we are the 12th largest district. And in FY '25, the enrollment was at 5,915. And those rankings continue through page three. And of course, you're going to see that your small districts at the bottom. Some of these districts have under 1,000 students if you take a look at your enrollment list. Okay, so the next chart, the next one over that starts with Gilmer at number one. We did a central, we did a ranking based on cost per pupil. So we took the overall cost for central office and divided that out by the enrollment to come up with a cost per pupil. You're going to see some small counties pop up near the top. And you're going to see your larger counties fall towards the bottom because there's more students to divide it over. Now, on this chart, we came out 48th. 48th out of the 55 counties with an average cost of $522 per pupil.
So Todd, you're telling, telling us that we were the 12th largest in the state. We came in 16th as far as our expenditures. But when you break it down by students, 48 way down the line.
Yeah, yeah. The, the.
Oh, pretty well, aren't we?
Yeah, the cost per pupil is at 48. So yeah, those are, those are solid numbers. The next ranking, next one over. This is broken out to the count, the positions that are in purely administrative positions. So things like psychologists and social workers, those that routinely interact with students as a part of their job responsibilities are taken out. And again, this is. So this would be your directors, your, your coordinators, the positions that more often are referred to as pure administrative positions. When you see these positions, it's broken out, we are 16th on this list. And then the.
Lower than a lot of the smaller schools.
Yeah, it, it moves up and it moves up and down. Your bigger counties are gonna have a, have a smaller per pupil amount just because there's more kids to divide out the cost over. But that per pupil amount came out to $319.92. And then I wanted to share. This is a complete list.
You've been marking them.
These actually go position by position, the positions I was talking about.
Yeah.
So first up is the superintendent's position, which is position 102. And then it gives you the ranking from one to 55. You can see that Wayne's at 32nd in superintendent pay.
I'm on the 12th on this list.
Yeah. Page two begins position 103, that's deputy associate assistant superintendent.
We did good on this one.
You did real good on this.
Yeah. All effective on that.
So there, there are 34 counties that have either a deputy and associate or an assistant superintendent. So those 34 counties are listed there, and of course, we're not on that list.
They could have multiple, right?
Yes. Yeah. And you can kind of see that in the salaries. So for example, you know, Canal County has $500,000 worth of expenses there. So that's multiple possessions. Same thing with Mon, Putnam, Wood, on down the list.
Yeah.
And again, you see those, you know, those are your larger districts there at the top. Right, page three, position 104 is administrative assistants. There were 14 counties that reported having an administrative assistant position. Again, we're not on that list. Position 105 is attorney slash counsel. There were four counties that reported having that position in place. Again, we were not on that list. Position 106, directors and managers. And again, this is total wages, so this depends, you know, obviously, there can be multiple positions. So Berkeley was number one on this list at 2.4 million. And then you can see we're 14th on the list at 405,000. You go over to position 107, this is director coordinator of support services. We're 12th on this list. Next page is 108, treasurer chief school business official. So again, you can see that there's some counties that have more than one person listed in Or at least I hope so.
If not, you're in the wrong job.
Yeah, right, yeah. We're 40th on that list. Jeb's gonna print that off and tape it to my door.
That's what I was thinking.
Don't waste your time, Jeb.
There's a reason why I did so much trying to put it over there.
Seventeen years old.
109 is child nutrition director.
But just like that, that's based on their certification, isn't it? Or not?
It's, yes, it's whoever's, it's whoever's listed in that position for the district. Our position is, you know, is a director position, so they receive the director's salary. You see, that's 11th on that list. Next up is academic coaches. And that's one I pulled out when I was looking at the administrative cost. We don't have any. There were 29 counties that had academic coaches. We're not on that list. Next up was curriculum specialist. We're not on that list. There were 30 counties with, with those positions. TIS, technology integration specialist 202, we're 17th on that list. Professional accountants, position 308, we're 17th on that list. Technology system specialist.
And now how does that include, you know?
That would be our technology department. Who would be in that?
Joe Bass and.
Any in the group?
No, it wouldn't be Joe, it'd be.
Marsha.
Marsha. Yeah.
Scarborough.
Marsha Poth, Scarborough, Mark Scarborough.
Yeah, I think we have about four TSSs.
Because there's some, but like Keith Ramsey, aren't some of them paid?
Some of them are contracted.
Mountain State or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's 13. But to Johnny's point, there's some contracted services in there as well. Same thing with the attorney. You know, we don't show up on that list, but we contract that out, so we do have expenses there. Psychologists.
How many of those do we have?
Oh, gosh, I'm thinking three.
I mean, I'm just curious though.
Three, it's three or four.
Okay.
We can go through that certified list and find out. It's the 13th on that list. Attendance director, position 322. 16th on that list. Attendance officers on the next page. There were just five counties with attendance officers.
What's the difference between a director and an officer?
An officer is somebody that doesn't have an attendance degree, or I'm sorry, an administrative degree. They just simply help with attendance enforcement. Social workers, position 324. We're ninth on that list. Now, we have, we have quite a few social workers that go into that count. And again, we receive specific funding for those positions. Truancy diversion specialist 325. Similar to your attendance worker. None listed there. Student social and emotional support specialist. So this is gonna be some of your mental health counselors, that type of thing. So we're seventh on that list. So we do have a good amount going into student support. Over on the next page, director of coordinator services, 521.
Not on there?
Yeah. None listed there. Supervisor of transportation.
Whose job is that?
That would be, that's position code 650.
Just can't remember what we have.
That, I would think that, that Jill Maynard would be listed under, would be listed under there, but it's probably, it might be split coded. I'll, I'll look at that.
No, I was just curious.
School bus supervisor, 652. Not on that list. Supervisor maintenance, 570, we're not on that list. There's 21 that are. Payroll supervisor, we're not on that list. Accounts payable supervisor, not on that list. There's 21 that are accountant three, we're not on that list. And then the last one was accountant two. There was nobody that had any accountant ones. So ours were all listed under professional accountant. We didn't have any under three or two, but I included those just so we would get an accurate picture of the total funding that's, that's going on.
Right. What about the director of maintenance? Is that on here anywhere?
Yeah, it's under, it's under the director.
Director, okay.
Yeah. They have a, they have a separate supervisor maintenance, but the director of transportation, director of maintenance, they fall under that director.
Thank you, Todd.
So that is a, that's a complete breakdown of the cost. So, you know, I think overall, it would show that we're, we're running pretty lean. But as enrollment continues to drop, we need to keep an eye, to make sure that it stays lean. And we need to keep an eye on those positions and, and kind of figure out, you know, what next steps are. So I know that that, we had talked about that at the last meeting, so I just wanted to share that information with you. And as always, it's a lot of information just to lay in front of you. I mean, that's probably 50, 50 sheets of paper there. So we'll let you take that, let you look it over, and then.
But just like, I don't mean to interrupt you, but like when someone retires, if there's possibility, then we could maybe not have that position or divide it up or something like that amongst other people or whatever to try to save money.
Yeah, what, what we always try to.
We have to wait till, till somebody leaves before we can really do anything.
Yeah, what, what we always like to do is take a look at the counties that, you know, are really operating lean to see how they're doing and what kind of structure they have in place for that. So going back to that, going back to the first page that I gave you, or the first set of handout, when you look at that rank cost per pupil. What I'm interested in is, you know, you've got a county like Marion, who is dead last in cost per pupil. And I mean significantly, they're significantly at 55. So they're spending about $274 per pupil. So either that's a reporting error, or, you know, they have got a really, really tight structure. So I think that these counties, of course, we're 48th on this list, so there's not many below us. But looking at the, that last page on that list, the Wood, the Mercer, Randolph, Harrison, Putnam, Raleigh, those are the counties, along with us, we're, we're about seventh on that list, that are, that are operating the most efficiently.
Wow.
So we can look and see, see how they have things structured.
Yeah, you're gonna look at Raleigh with 10,000, 297 students. 435.
Or even Putnam. I mean, Putnam is pretty close to us.
Well, someone, I guess, could help you on this, cause.
Right, math wise.
Berkeley, Berkeley is 40th, and they got almost 20,000 students, but per pupil thing would help them there.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids.
Yeah. They'll be ahead of Canal before too long, probably.
Of course, having a big enrollment helps you get that number down. Okay, that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Interesting though.
Yes.
We're 16th on that list, and there's one, two, three, four, five counties smaller than us that it costs more. They have a central office that costs more. So.
Yeah.
I mean, we're obviously running, like you said, lean.
So next Thursday, hopefully by next Thursday, by the next regular board meeting, I'm gonna be able to give you some, you know, a real concrete picture of what it looks like that we can cut. We'll go back to those projections and get an idea of, you know, where we can get to through our normal processes, and then how, how short we are from where we need to be. So I think we can get to that by next Thursday.
Great.
Okay.
Excellent.
Go ahead and take off tomorrow, Todd.
Oh, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
Okay, all right. No more directives or board reports. No unfinished business. So let's move on to our new business consent action items. Superintendent recommends approval of the following action items. Additional items received prior to the time of the meeting may be added. Discussion and/or separate action of the items requested by members of the board and/or the superintendent. Items are subject to change. Any blanks will be filled in prior to the meeting, and in the event, a nominee withdraws, we reserve the right to put the next candidate into that position. Number one is consider for approval, the recommended personnel matters on pages one through three.
And you do have a revised copy. And we had substitute teacher interviews Friday, and some continued today, so we wanted to leave a blank there to, to get some people on the list. So you see those names on the list. There was a termination that was listed at the top of the agenda, that, that's just somebody that had failed to renew, failed to renew or timely complete a background check, something like that, that's been taken care of, so that's being removed. And then, let's see if there's any other.
And the, the one that's been terminated?
Yes, the one that's being terminated, I need to give you that name. That name is David A. Smith, was hired as a custodian, and.
Where at?
I believe it was at Tulsa.
I've got it on my.
Yeah. And I provided you a copy of the letter, so if you have any questions about it, we would have to go into executive session, but you, you saw the termination letter and the reasons.
Wayne Ellman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's right here in front of me, Wayne Ellman.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
I actually need to pull two of these for separate consideration, just because they're family. The volunteer wrestling coaches.
Who is that?
That Devon Hall boy and Will Jeffers, actually, both of those.
Both of them?
Yes. Just throw those separately. All right. Tell you what, I'll step out of the room if you want to do that quickly, and then we'll. Tell you what, I'll step out of the room if you want to do that quickly and then we'll.
It's a good question about whether, whether you have to recuse when it's unpaid position.
Just in case.
Yeah, probably safe.
Nobody yet. Johnny is calling it right now.
I'm getting ready. Yeah, we're gonna, uh, we will vote on the, uh, two, uh, appointments that we have, have pulled, because, uh, Ms. Hall has recused herself, and that is.
Devin Hall and William Jeffers, uh, both are unpaid volunteer assistant wrestling coaches at Spring Valley High School.
Yes. Mark Ross made the motion, second. Dennis Ashworth made the second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Employment is approved four to zero, and Missy can return to the meeting.
It was, uh, Mark made the motion, you seconded, and it was approved four to zero.
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. Hall has returned to the meeting. It's four to zero.
Thank you. All right, for the remainder of the Personnel Matters, then.
I'm moved.
Motion by Randy, second, second by Johnny. Any questions, concerns, discussions about those? None heard?
I just want to mention, if you, at the bottom of page one, you've got these create positions. And, um, you know, this is student need.
Yeah.
If we, you know, that's. I'd rather not, but we have to because of student need and that, you know, it's part of our discussion about how, when you have those needs and you have to fill those positions, it's hard to stay within those ratios. Yeah.
So the Personnel Matters, as revised, Randy made the motion, Johnny made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, number two, Consider For Approval, the Minutes of the Wayne County Board, uh, meeting number twelve on October twenty-eighth, pages four through sixteen. Motion? Dennis, second, Johnny. Questions or concerns on those minutes? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number three, Consider For Approval, the voucher payments for October twenty twenty-five on pages seventeen through twenty-six.
Motion.
Randy?
Second.
Second by Johnny. Questions? No one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Four, Consider For Approval, the purchase requisition ordering quotes in excess of five thousand dollars, pages twenty-seven through thirty-five.
Motion.
Motion by Johnny. Second.
Second.
Randy? Questions, concerns, discussion? Anyone? Anybody? A fresh fruit on there, so that's, that's always good.
That myon subscription is something that the, that Saved the Children Foundation, they had supported through a grant, uh, for the last several years, but the, uh, that, um, that grant has expired, so that's something that we're having to move into the technology budget.
That covers all the, all the elementary and pre-K or pre-K ages. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. New business, separate action items. Number one, Consider For Approval, the Treasury Report for October twenty twenty-five on page thirty-six. Motion by Johnny, and second by Mark. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Two, Consider For Approval, the Budget Supplement and Transfers for October twenty twenty-five, pages thirty-seven through fifty-five.
Motion.
Motion by Johnny. Second.
Second.
Randy? Questions, concerns? No one has any? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number three, Consider For Approval, the CEFP Annual Update Form.
Yeah, so every year, we have to update our CE, our Comprehensive Educational Facilities Plan by December. And so when you're separate attachment. I can go over the updates with you. Some of these things, um, you know, we've completed in previous year's updates. So on page, what's marked as page number four, it's the first page of the CEFP. Um, you can see that we had marked completed, you know, we had replaced HVAC at Spring Valley High School, which was millions of dollars. That was accomplished. This, um, we had the, uh, HVAC at Wayne Elementary replaced.
Looks like you're missing a zero there, dude.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'd say we got it real cheap.
Yeah. And it, it was more than that, so I'll, I'll update that number. Uh, Lavalet Elementary Window, uh, replacement was completed. Pritchard Elementary. Uh, Window Replacement was completed. That, uh, that original HVAC number for Wayne Elementary, that was when we replaced some of the piping in the school, and we had marked that as twenty twenty-two completed, but we've actually upgraded the HVAC again there. So I can, I'll, I'll update that. Uh, Pritchard Elementary, it's, that's been updated as a needs project has been submitted. And, uh, that, that was what we went over earlier. Pritchard was on the list. Uh, Wayne High, the interior renovations. That included the, uh, bathroom renovations there. So that's been completed. Wayne Elementary Mantrap, that's been updated. That's a needs project that we just submitted. Of course, we have the Buffalo K through eight project that's underway, so the estimated completion there is twenty twenty-eight. Um, we've. Yes. The Wayne Elementary Pre-K Edition, that, that's been updated here. That's been completed. Of course, we completed the Wayne Middle School, uh, Safe Schools Entry. We completed interior renovations at Pritchard, Wayne Middle, and Tulsa High. That was, uh, uh, bathroom upgrades through the use of COVID funds. Sarita Canova Middle School, the Mantrap there. Um, that's a needs project, so that's been updated. Vincent Middle, uh, interior renovations, again, that was through those COVID funds. We, we did do renovations there in the restrooms. Uh, Vincent Middle Mantrap, that's in the design phase. That will be completed in twenty twenty-six. That's the one that we got approved as an MIP. Uh, Sarita Canova Middle Interior Renovations. Um, again, that has to do with that Mantrap. That is a, uh, I'm going to have to correct that. We did, we did complete those interior renovations. We upgraded the bathrooms there, so I'll make a change there. That was completed in twenty twenty-three. Spring Valley and Tulsa High Mantraps are needs projects that are on that list that we submitted. And then we have some replacement schools. And the last item on the list was Calog Elementary School Roof, which we completed in twenty twenty-two. So there's a lot of work that's been completed there. If you go onto page three. The two projects that we're reporting from annually, which were not on this list, but were repairs that cost over fifty thousand dollars, was the, uh, Spring Valley High School Drainage Correction. Of course, we were able to access FEMA funding, so you'll see it's marked as local and federal funding. And then the Lavalet Elementary Roof Replacement, uh, one of the buildings there, we replaced the roof, and that came in over fifty thousand dollars. So that is the document that we'll be submitting to the State Department of Education. Any questions, concerns?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question by Johnny, and second by Mark. No other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries five to zero. Number four, Consider For Approval, the Revised Job Description for the Forensic Speech and Debate Coach for the High Schools on page fifty-six and fifty-seven.
So we've, we had a Forensic Speech and Debate Coach Job Description that was approved, and that was set up for all three high school sites. We've had difficulty filling those positions. And, uh, we've only had one active team, and that's been at Spring Valley High School. So the idea was, if you remember, we had riffed the position. During riff and transfer season, the idea is, is that we're going to try to do a, a district forensic speech and debate coach, use some uh, online, uh, technology to allow students who want to participate at the other two schools to participate. So again, this is a position that has been funded in the past. We funded, uh, for Spring Valley High School. We're just expanding that role to, to serve students from all three schools.
Okay, and so that, that's like a regular position, they work all day at the school?
No, no, no. It's a, uh, it's a supplemental position.
Supplemental, okay, because it's got needs employment school year, so is that so many days, so many hours? I mean, how are they gonna?
I thought it was a single.
It just says school year.
I thought before it was like a single amount, like it was.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a flat fee that they get, and then it'll be posted as a supplemental position.
Okay, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, that's exactly it.
Gotcha.
I make motions.
Motion by Dennis, second.
Second.
Any other questions, concerns?
Okay, so it's gonna be like a supplemental? Would that be like during the month or, I mean, is it?
It's at the evenings. It's after school.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, who made the motions, who made?
Dennis made the motion. Randy made the second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Potential items for our future agenda.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know that we're going to get to this, but we're, we're going to start some policy revision soon. So we're going to start policy work, um, if not, at this next meeting, we'll start in December. Um, the snow removal bids came down on October thirty-first for the other two areas that we haven't awarded. So I'll have a recommendation for you. We did receive one bid. Um, so I'll have a recommendation for you next week on the snow removal. And then, um, Mr. Priest found, we found a, uh, twenty twenty Ford F-two-fifty, uh, maintenance vehicle with a, uh, the toolboxes on the sides and the back, uh, that is needed for our HVAC crew. And if you remember, we had targeted trying to get two vehicles into the maintenance department this year. And, uh, we are using, um, monies that were left over from our bus purchases. We had a little, little bit left over, so we're using the monies that were left over for our, um, from those purchases, but I'm going to bring that to you. This is something that I need to act on, or this thing could disappear. Um, so I'm going to approve this as a, as an emergency purchase. I'm going to send you the details on it. If anybody has any issues with me going ahead with, with the purchase. Um, you know, I'll ask you to let me know in the next twenty-four hours or so. Otherwise, we're going to go ahead and secure it.
Yeah.
Or we might lose it. And it's, uh, the price on the vehicle was thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars.
What kind of mileage is on that?
Sixty thousand miles.
Wow.
That's low miles for that kind of vehicle.
It's at a, it's at a dealership, and I, I ran, I ran Blue Book, I ran, um, some comparison pricing for, for West Virginia on the vehicle, and the price is at the, is at the bottom range of what we should expect to pay for it. Matter of fact, the range that it projected was like thirty-eight to, thirty-eight to fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle, and we're, we're right at that bottom range.
This funding is coming out of leftover bus monies, so not out of our general fund, so.
Correct.
All right.
I have a couple of questions. What's the status of the lease agreement on the Westmoreland Building that was going to go into effect on November first?
We are still waiting. It's supposed to be executed this Friday. I got a, um, text message from our attorney on Friday. Um, she's going to do a quick, a quick deed. Um, so that they can go ahead and, and assume the property while all the surveying and all that is still being completed. So she said she's going to do that this Friday.
Quick, a quick claim deed?
Quick claim deed, yeah.
Okay, and I'm assuming that the utilities and everything out of Fort Gay Jim is out of our name now?
They are. Matter of fact, we just rejected a water bill that we received. Those utilities are out, and then I'm working on the utilities at Westmoreland. I sent, I sent our crew down along with our utility auditor to figure out where all those meters are running. And, um, you know, because we're splitting that property up, so they're still working on that. Um, that, trying to get a, uh, survey of that property has been a nightmare. Um, so we're, we're working through that process, but she, she suggested that we do a, a quick deed so we can go ahead and move it. And I've talked to the, um, Gina Carr. I've talked to her, and, and she was, they were accepting of that. I need to follow up with her this week. She, she doesn't know that it's going to happen as soon as this Friday, but that's what our attorney said, that they would finalize it by Friday. Anything else?
Anyone? No one?
Motion to adjourn.
Question by Johnny, second.
I'm going to adjourn, Johnny.
Is that you, Dennis? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. It is six fifty-eight.
Six fifty-eight. Thank you to those who joined us online.
How many?
Uh, it was up to seven at one point.
Ooh, that's a crowd.
Wow.